There we go. Okay, welcome everyone. I sure hope everyone can hear me okay. And I really appreciate, we have a lot of life enrichment, activity directors helping make this happen today. Thank you so much friends. Today is the very first special session designed for people who live in nursing homes. That's often how I say it everyone, you're also known as residents and in Wyoming right now, many of you have decided to refer to yourselves as neighbors because you are neighbors to one another. It's really quite a beautiful term. It is also used in Colorado. It's used in many culture change cultures. And so anyone hearing that for the first time, we would just teach you that, that the word neighbor is a beautiful, normal word. And the people who live there really are neighbors to one another. And what happens in an institutional culture is we tend to look at everything through the lens of the nursing home.
I understand you wanted to look.
So for instance, um, for instance, you know, it's a place of work for many people. And we tend to use words that represent that more than words that represent home. And that's a goal of the culture change movement. My name is Carmen Bowman. I've been very involved in the culture change movement for two decades. And it's always my privilege and joy to get to tell people about it, teach people about it. I got a grant in Wyoming to help your state learn about culture change. And there's three parts to the grant and today is a beginning of one of the parts of the grant. I will explain that. We got a grant to do an in-person conference, which quickly went to online, of course. And last Tuesday was the first Tuesday of a culture change conference session. It has been recorded. It was about shared leadership and learning circles. It was very, very good. And it's recorded if anyone wants to see it. Next Tuesday is the next one. So every Tuesday in March. And then today's the first special session, we're calling them 10 special sessions. And we thought we would begin with those who live in the nursing home and try to engage you all in a dialogue. So welcome Wyoming, welcome those of you that live in a nursing home in Wyoming. And there are three parts to this training today, everyone. I'm first going to try to tell you a little bit about what in the world is culture change. So notice the words culture change. We, we are intentional about those words, everyone. Sometimes people change the words, which is fine. I'm not saying you can't. But I tend to come back always, always back to these two words because we're trying to change an institutional culture. We're not trying to change anyone's ethnicity, of course, right? Nor could we. Sometimes that gets somehow muddled in there. And I tend to believe that changing institutional culture is still the answer that we're all looking for, okay? So when we say culture change, we're talking about changing institutional culture. And I'll tell you why I think it's still the answer. Here we go. You ready? Did you know that when you change institutional culture, so when you make it less institutional and more normal, more home. Look, notice I'm not saying like home and I'm not saying home like. But when you create true home for people, guess what? They want to live there. People want to live in a place like that. So when people want to live in a nursing home, let's just be honest and get it out of the way. The nursing home itself is, is more full. They make their money when they're full. Let's just get that one out of the way. Better yet, you can save money. Like when you give people food they want to eat, when they want to eat it, when you serve the individuals who live there with restaurant style meal style, menu style. Guess what? You actually save money because you only make the food people want. When you also go by the person's schedule, for instance, when you stop waking somebody up, make them get up, make them, hey, wake up, wake up. Do you realize that is a waste of time and a waste of money? So, so moving along the routine of people who live in the nursing home ends up being more efficient and then we save money. Now, when people get to work in an environment that is less institutional, they tend to like it. They tend to stay. So turnover goes down. And then those of you that live there, you tend to have the same team members taking care of you. So now we have continuity of care and it's better, right? And so when people want to work in a culture that honors the people who live there, they tend to stay and they tend to want to come. Look at what's happening with staffing right now, everyone. This is why I keep preaching culture change because it holds so many answers on so many levels, alright? Then we also tend to have fewer problems. When we, when we really go to those of you who live there and we ask your opinion and we ask how it's really going and we really listen and we really try to keep getting things right. You know, that increases satisfaction. Wow, check it out. There's fewer calls to the ombudsman. There's fewer complaints internally. There's fewer complaint called to the survey agency. When we give people real food that they love to eat, they, they're, they're just, they're healthier and happier. For instance, everyone, you can save a lot of money by not jumping to all the supplements, okay? It's very institutional that when someone starts to lose weight, we offer those supplements. But those supplements aren't actually real food. They're like a made up food. And what we've learned is when you offer people real food that they really love, guess what? They tend to eat that and they do better and it costs less money. How many of you love malts? How many of you love ice cream shakes? And how many of you love smoothies? Take your pick, right? And we can put extra protein. We can put peanut butter in these types of things and really help the nutrients be there, help to gain weight if that's the issue and not have to drink the supplement and save money. And guess what else? So many of those supplements go wasted. Typically, someone never finishes it to the end. Whereas if you're drinking, in my case, a malt, this is what happens at the end. Ready? And I'm sad that it's over. Anybody else? Okay, another great tenant of changing culture is to just bring more people to, to those of you who live there. So notice, I'm not gonna just bring up one age, but we need people of all ages interacting with you, beautiful older people who live now in the nursing home. So one year I got to be a part of a different grant in Colorado where we actually did a day camp for children, a youth day camp. Wyoming, you could do this. And this is my daughter when she was 12, who met Maya and became fast friends. We know how this can go, right? We got to spend all week together. It's a day camp. We went every day. And notice what Maya said, everyone, after a week of hanging out with children around, I don't know, eight to 13, okay? She said, "The children brought my happiness back. My depression is gone. And I stopped my medication today." Are we hearing this about Zoloft, everyone? There's so many good things about making life normal again. We must fight that institutional, non-normal way. And as we open up again, everyone, let's invite more and more people of all ages to live life, not just even pay a visit, but to come live life with you as you live your life in the nursing home. And when we change institutional culture and when we make it more about those of you that live there, guess what? We end up being in better compliance with those regulations anyway. And guess what? Those regulations are only minimal, minimal. Guess what? We can go above minimal compliance with regulations when you just keep moving towards real life, normal life. Turn your work into following the people who live there. Instead of making the people who live there follow the schedule of the institution, everything ends up being better. So what else? Eat when you want to eat. How about sleep until you wake up? Uninterrupted sleep, restorative sleep. I'm going to talk more about that in a little bit. How about making more decisions over your lives every day? Daily decision-making as well as bigger decision-making. I'm going to tell you more about that in a little bit. I'm going to give some examples. Preferences. People know your preferences. They know what you love and what you hate and they honor your choices. They give you choices and they honor what you choose. It's really a lovely example of working with each other instead of against. Sometimes the institution pits us against each other. We've got to fight that, everyone. And then when all of that happens, we also see people not as depressed or anxious or upset. We see better quality of life and better health. How many of you are healthier if you sleep, if you're well rested, right? And then there's something also called highest practicable level of wellbeing, which I'm going to tell you a little bit more about as well. Did you know that stroking a pet reduces blood pressure? Did you know, I once ran into this as a surveyor and inspector of nursing homes. I ran into a physician order that said, "Michael must have his dog live with him wherever he lives." Oh my goodness. I'm just bringing up animals, everyone, because they represent normal life. Did you know that about over 50% of Americans have a pet? And so if 50% of Americans have a pet, nursing, people who live in nursing homes can have pets too. And many do across the nation. We hear many, many, many positive stories about the cat, the dog, the bunny, the turtle. Sometimes the chickens in the courtyard and birds in cages, the right birds can become companions. They keep you company, everyone. I have an amazing story out of an early book in our movement by Dr. Bill Thomas. And he talks about a man who moved into the nursing home and had the diagnosis called failure to thrive. I'm sorry to say, but that means, you know, he's on his way out. He doesn't care about living, right? He's sort of given up. And they asked if they could put a bird in a cage in his room to keep him company. And he actually said yes. And at first the staff took care of the bird, but slowly he started to care about the bird and talked to the bird and interact with the bird. Now take care of the cage and everything. And guess what, everyone? He got so much better from failure to thrive. He moved out of the nursing home and he moved into assisted living. Once again, we do not hear stories about Zoloft like that. So I want you all to dream big and think big and think normal, actually. You know, normal shouldn't be that big, should it? But compared to what we're used to in a typical nursing home, it's sort of like thinking big, isn't it? So let me pause right there. If Brittany and Dawn and whoever else Pam is around, can you ask those of, those that are with you if they have any questions about anything I just said or feedback about it? What do you all think of some of the elements of changing culture that I just mentioned? Oh dear. Do I need to, Dawn, you can unmute. Brittany, you can unmute. Brittany?
Yes ma'am.
Any feedback from the room?
So we were just discussing pets in the building. And because we, because of the life care policy, we don't do, live in pets, but we encourage all of our families and community members to have their pets visit. And then we have a great big aviary, guinea pigs and several staff bring in their pets, cats and dogs and things to visit.
Okay.
And so we were just having that discussion. Do you guys have anything else? Juan, do you?
Not right now. Yeah, Dawn? How about Dawn or Pam? Anybody have anything to bring up or question? Yeah.
Juan was actually one of our, you know, our residents that's on our, our team and wanted to talk. Okay, go ahead, Juan.
Yeah, I'm just trying to expand your, your ideas to different parts of the community, people that are not involved. We try to get them involved in this area right now. So you can have a lot of, a lot of choices.
Let's see, Dawn and Juan, it just went out a little bit. Can you maybe just say it again, please, Juan?
You can go to a different variety of people, young, old, to expand what you're saying. Your ideas are great like that. And it's just, it's just reaching out to people to, to come in and, and have their word, their word of value or whatever is going to come.
Oh wow. Hey Juan, you are a man of beautiful words. To bring people in, to bring a word of value. I'm going to quote you, Juan. That's beautiful. Thank you. Yes, we need people of all ages. We need to be a community. Do you all realize a nursing home can be a wonderful hub of life? Invite clubs to meet at the nursing home, everyone. The club, you used to be a part of whatever it is, you know? Just think of ways. Have a coffee bar, have a restaurant, you know? Bring the community to you. Have a playground back in the backyard. Oh, so many things like that have happened. And let me just ask Pam if you have any feedback and then I'll move on, please.
I do. Just this past Thai week, we decided we were going to open up for some of the intergenerational activities. And I had my aide bring in her 15-month-old baby. And she went around and to each of the rooms and the effect was amazing. Some of those residents lit up like we had never seen them light before. So it was awesome. And of course, we do have several animals that live on the, in the, the nursing home and they are the bright spot. Not only do they visit, but we have several that live there. And so I can attest to the fact that having pets there makes all the difference in the world.
Oh Pam, I appreciate that so much. You know what I thought Pam and Brittany and Dawn as an activity director? I always thought I could not plan one event that ever compared to the children or the animals. And what does that say, everybody? It tears me up. We're running around planning all these events, planning trivia when, when we know that real animals and real people of all ages, children especially, babies for heaven's sake, that's what makes a bigger difference. So I encourage anyone listening to help. You know, here's the thing, I can't just say, "Hey, activity director, go find babies." Here's why. None of us know that many babies at one time and babies grow fast, right? So if I was you, all of you, here's what I would be saying. Hey, everybody, like everybody, residents, families, staff, if you know anyone who has a baby, invite them to come. We want to meet them. We want to be with them, not just even for a visit, just come and be with us. Live life with us. Stay, you see? Do more than a visit, everyone. Live life together. I'm trying to get visit even out of my own vocabulary. I'm trying to portray that it can be more than that. So let's move on. Thank you all. I'm now going to show you some amazing things in our federal regulations that a lot of people don't know that are even there. Are you ready? Here we go. First of all, CMS is the federal government, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. And they regulate nursing homes. And they, they start with definitions. There's a long list. And I want to show you how they describe person-centered care. This means to focus on the resident as the locus of control and support the resident in making their own choices and having control over their daily lives. Hey, guess what, everyone? I was just on a call with CMS, Division of Nursing Homes, and I pointed out that definition is better than care. Notice, care is what you receive and care is what staff gives. Notice, this is really more about living life, to be the locus of control and help you make your own choices and have control over your daily lives. So I encourage all of you to talk about this. Bring it to your meetings. Is that really happening? It's so, so good. And then look at this. Every nursing home must treat each resident with respect and dignity and care for each resident in a manner and in an environment that promotes maintenance or enhancement of your quality of life, recognizing each resident's individuality. Wow, nursing homes, I'm sorry, everybody, I don't mean to suspect, but generally they're not known for quality of life. I just have to say that out loud. We all could get better at that. And team members on the line, I think it's because of this, one reason is this, ready? Look at this. The activity regulations go to who? The activities team. Nursing goes to nursing. Social service regs go to social service. Dining over here, watch. There's quality of life regs. Did you know that? But who do they go to? See, we don't have a quality of life department. And so no one's really tending to them. It doesn't, it's not high on anyone's radar. I challenge all of you to get quality of life to be the number one thing, right? Then the next one, the nursing home is to protect and promote the rights of the resident. So they're not just supposed to tell you your rights, everyone. They're not supposed to give you, just give you a copy or put it up on a poster, okay? They're also supposed to protect your rights and even promote your rights. Team members on the line, try to spread that around on your team. We got to be more aggressive and proactive with protecting and promoting rights. And then the resident's wishes and preferences must be considered in your exercise of rights by any representative. That means a family member. I mean, we all probably know, sometimes this can go backwards. A daughter might want a mother who lives in the nursing home to do things the mother doesn't want to. And guess what? The family member is also supposed to defer to the resident's wishes and preferences. Isn't that good? Then we have, you have, you have the right to be informed of risks and benefits of proposed care. This is so good. This is straight from our culture change movement, everyone. Listen to these choice words of treatment and treatment alternatives or treatment options and to choose the alternative or option that you prefer. Isn't that great? You are supposed to be given lots of choice, lots of options, alternatives. No one should ever make you do anything. You also have the right to request, refuse and/or discontinue treatment. Isn't that strong? Request treatment, stop it if you want, discontinue and even refuse treatment. This is dining, dietary orders. This is medication. You have that right. And we all need to get better at realizing you have that right. And then we have a section called self-determination, right? To choose activities, schedules, including sleeping and waking times, healthcare and providers of healthcare services that are consistent with your interests with assessments and plan of care. So look at this, everyone. The really strong part is you have the right to choose schedules. And most nursing homes are known for not having a lot of choice in choosing schedules. And I'm going to come back to sleeping and waking here in a moment. You also have the right to make choices about aspects of your life that are significant to you. My favorite line out of all the regs, you have the right to make choices about aspects of your life that are significant to you. Beautiful. So now everyone, I want you to think about this. When it comes to sleeping, what really would be true choice? See, in a nursing home, we tend to walk around with a clipboard and say, "When do you want to get up? When do you want to get up?" That would be choice, right? But guess what? True choice when it comes to sleep. Ready? How many of you love it when you get to sleep and not have to set your alarm clock? In fact, how many of you would rather be sleepy right now? Anybody? Sleep is glorious. We all love sleep. Sleep is one of the best things we can do for our bodies. And when you don't have to wait, put your alarm on, how do you feel? I'd love to hear in the chat box, maybe, any, any words. How do you feel when you don't have to set your alarm? Or those of you in the nursing home, how do you feel when nobody wakes you up and you wake up on your own? And then of course, everyone, the flip side of this is what's it like team members to have to wake someone up? And we all have done it. What's it like to wake up your kids, your teenagers, your spouse, right? It's no fun. I hate waking people up. I hate it terribly. Pam said, "I feel refreshed." Absolutely, right? And then I'd like to share this with you. I'm just going to talk about the benefits of being well-rested. Think of it, everyone. When we're well-rested, Pam started with refreshed. Did you know we're less depressed and anxious? We're more alert. We can take in the day. We have more energy. Did you know our immune system builds? Proteins, synthesis takes place. Tissues repair, muscles grow. Are you kidding me? We have better cognition in the morning. People don't have problems, okay? What we used to call behaviors. They don't have problems because, guess what? Most of the problems were about us waking them up. We have better mood. Oh my gosh, we have fewer falls. If you want fewer falls, go after honorary sleep. Everything is better. So why would we wake people up? Isn't that, isn't that something? And why are people woken up in nursing homes? What are the results? See this picture, everyone. It's sort of like hurry up and wait. We get people up early and then they fall asleep waiting for breakfast. So we highly recommend something we call open dining, where you have some open times for the breakfast and lunch and dinner. And you start to build in choice. I just showed you all those choice regulations, right? And I'd love for you all to start talking in the language of being compliant with the choice regulation. We tend to not talk about them. We tend to just do things the old way when in fact these regulations support us. Brittany says, "Sleeping in is always wonderful and waking up on your own improves everyone's day." That is for sure. So here's what this can look like, everyone. Open dining. Eat anytime you prefer to. Breakfast, now this is just one nursing home. They did breakfast from six to nine, lunch 11 to one, dinner 4:30 to 6:30. You can have your choice off the buffet or order from the menu. Woo! That's even more choice than my house. How about you? Do you realize whatever breakfast time is in your building, it's arbitrary. Someone else picked it. It'd be fun for you to talk about, who even picked this breakfast time? How many years has it been around? Isn't that funny to think about? And then breakfast drives everything, right? Everything in the morning. And it even drives these bad practices. We call it the get-up list. So you got to get these residents up and you got to put them down at night so you can get them up. And the language gets ugly, the get-ups. It even turns into the get-ups. And oh my gosh, I hope nobody says the put-downs, right? And then what if you don't even eat breakfast? You know what happens sadly? We teach people learned helplessness. So I learn, if I just let them get me up and go to the dining room and eat a couple bites, then I can go back where? Back to bed. Do you realize that's learned helplessness? Even the CNAs learned, learned helplessness, everyone. They know this person doesn't want to get up and they don't want to get them up, but somebody in the institution tells them they must. That is not right. And so you shouldn't have to go eat breakfast if you don't want them. You shouldn't be woken up. If you don't want, I mean, I would say no one should be woken up personally because sleep is healthy. We call ourselves healthcare, right, everyone? And so the other neat thing is that there's less rush, less rush in the morning. CNAs actually have a chance to give the great care that they really want to give. They have time to brush someone's hair and teeth and maybe put on the lipstick or whatever it is they want, right? So then another, another regulation, ready? Is this, you have the right to organize in groups. So that's typically your resident council. And then it says that the nursing home must consider the views of a resident or family group and act promptly upon the grievances and recommendations. I love that part, recommendations of such groups concerning issues of resident care and life in your nursing home. So they must consider your views, positive and negative grievance and recommendation. And I love how it says about care and life in your building. So keep coming to life, everyone. Focus more on life, talk more about life. And this is the daily community meeting I mentioned earlier. This is a culture change practice. And in this particular home in Denver, they do a community meeting every morning, Monday through Friday. They also do a second one in Spanish. How beautiful is that? And they truly have become a model of what it can mean to be a community. So these meetings are for both staff and residents together, together, we're a community, right? And together, we live life. We celebrate birthdays. We, we don't just welcome new people. We give them the microphone. We say, "Hey, new person, tell us about yourself." Both staff and residents, right? We, this home has even included everyone on budget decisions. Who does that? On products, they're testing the juice, you guys, and they're saying, "How much does this one cost? How much does this one cost?" One year during survey, the resident council president ended up telling the surveyor, this is a beautiful quote, ready? "We run this place." Can you? Working nursing homes, that's the way to get survey out of the building quicker. Think about it. If you want a survey to go quick, you have residents run the place. Let me tell you, I was a surveyor and it's just like anybody in any job. They want to get it done. They want to go home. So everything you can do to make it go faster always pays off. More importantly, residents should run that place, right? It's their home. It's their home. And we say it's their home, but how many times have some of you felt like, no, it's not? I don't make any decisions here. And so now, in place of the monthly resident council, they do this daily community meeting. They take notes. If surveyors ask for minutes, these are the minutes. I heard a fun thing that the administrator told a surveyor once. Well, she's holding up the stack of notes because it's daily. And she says, well, how many do you want? Another neat thing is this, if a, if a, I hate the word grievance, I'm trying not to say it. But if a resident files a complaint today in the nursing home, guess what? Tomorrow morning, at the daily community meeting, the topic will be discussed. You know, talk about a fantastic procedure for investigation. You quickly bring the topic up to everyone and ask, is this going on for you? Has anyone seen this, whatever it is? And so because of that, they don't need resident council monthly. To be honest, everyone listening, a monthly meeting is too far out. That's what this has taught us. What if something goes wrong for you today and resident council was yesterday? And you gotta wait a whole month? That doesn't make any sense, does it? You could also do neighborhood meetings, everyone. There's another practice where instead of the big resident council meeting, you could do neighborhood council meetings. If you want to know more about that and we have time, I'll tell you. I'm not sure if I have time to go through language, but I want to just start telling you all. There's a lot of institutional language, words we don't have to use. And CMS actually brings up language in the regs. Did you know? In Resident Rights, under Respect and Dignity, there's one, you know, sentence that says, avoid the use of labels for residents such as feeders or walkers. And there's lots more labels. If you want to talk more about that, we can. CMS has always said surveyors are supposed to be good role models of dignified language. So at least if you get the handout, there's more. And I can come back to that if we have time. But I want to just get through this section and ask if anyone has questions first. So I'm still in the Resident Rights and the Regulations. You all also have the right to participate in the development and, check this out, implementation of your person-centered plan of care. You have the right to participate in the planning, to identify people you want to be in the planning process. That typically means at the care conference. You have the right to request meetings. You have the right to request revisions to your care plan. And you have the right, check this out, everyone, to participate in establishing the expected goals and outcomes of care. And I want to focus on that word goal. You, it, it could be stronger. You have the right to make your own goals for yourself and for your care and for your life. You have the right to be informed of changes in the care plan. You have the right to see the care plan. You have the right to facilitate inclusion of yourself and, and any representative, family member. And I want to point out here, we are supposed to incorporate your personal and cultural preferences in developing goals. So notice, personal preferences in developing goals. That basically means we're supposed to ask you what your goals are. So I love bringing this up, everybody. Whose goals are they on a care plan? Well, they should be yours, those of you that live there. But we are guilty, I'm guilty, of making up goals for other people. And I love just sort of telling everyone, there should be freedom here. Professionals, you should have the freedom not to make up goals for someone else. And residents, you should have the freedom to make your own goals. So don't be surprised if some of your team members start asking you in, in care conference, what are your goals for getting stronger? What are your goals for your incontinence, if you have it? I'm sorry, bud. What are, what are your goals, right? What are your goals for your diabetes? And what are your goals for your quality of life? It could be so, so good. So guess what? In the regs, the term "the resident goals" has now come about 153 times. That's a big change in the new regulations. And then there's this beautiful concept, everyone, called highest practicable level of wellbeing. I'm in love with this and nobody seems to know much about it. It's right in the regulation, regulation after regulation. It's almost at the end of every reg. And yet, you don't hear people talk about it. You don't have it in care conference and we don't tend to identify it on the care plan. So I want to encourage all of you to consider purposely putting a new section on the care plan called highest practicable level of wellbeing. I'm going to spell it out here quickly. The strongest place in all the regs is right here at comprehensive person-centered care planning. Look at this, the care plan must describe the following. The services that are to be furnished to attain or maintain the resident's highest practicable, physical, mental, and psychosocial wellbeing. So there's three parts. And I want to show you something, practicable. Notice the word able. That really helps us to understand it. Because usually, the word practical rolls off our tongue, but we're not talking practical, everyone. Practical means depending on what's available. If we don't have a lot of staff, we can't help you walk. Guess what? Nursing homes signed up to do these regs and it's supposed to be the other way. If you are able to walk, you should be walking, period. We help you to reach your highest practicable, whatever you're able to do, even with help, even if it's slower, even if it takes longer, right? To do what you can do. And I'm going to share a video clip, everyone, of me doing my very first attempt to talk to someone who lives in a nursing home about this. And I'd love to have all of you think about trying to do this with each other more, no matter what your role is. And residents, feel free to bring up highest practicable. Here we go. You'll see that it's, I call it raw footage. Here we go.
Well, hi, John. This is Carmen. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
And John, is it okay if I record you on the video?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, John, there's some, there's a concept in the federal regulations for people living in nursing homes. And it's, it's called highest practicable level of wellbeing. So what a person is most able to do. And the nursing home is supposed to help a person reach their highest practicable. And then they divide it into three things. Physical wellbeing, mental wellbeing, and psychosocial wellbeing. And I just wondered, John, I know you're a brilliant man. And I just wondered, what would you say your highest practicable physical wellbeing is right now? What are you most capable of physically?
I don't know how to answer that.
That's okay. Maybe Suzie can help. Like, are you able to walk?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Now, so, so, John, we're trying to help team members figure out what a person is most capable of doing. And then our job is to help them do that. So could you be walking more often? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Okay, so see, that's an example. Maybe on your care plan, it would say, you know, that you are capable of walking and you would like to walk more and you would like to hold on to the ability to walk. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Now, let's try, let's try maybe a harder subject. I'm going to ask you about mental wellbeing. But then I'm also going to ask you about psychosocial wellbeing. And you get to decide how to answer. So what do you think, what would you say your highest practicable mental wellbeing is?
Once again, I'm not sure how to answer that.
It's okay. It's kind of a different concept, isn't it? So, yeah, so, John, you are very smart, I have noticed. And so your, your highest practicable mental wellbeing is probably higher than most people think of a person living in a nursing home. Would you agree?
Yeah.
Uh huh. In fact, I heard that you have an interest in inventing something to do with your pendant, that it would be able to figure out exactly the kind of help someone needs. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's amazing. So see, that's an example. Let's say, you know, I come to the care plan because that's supposed to reflect who you are. And your care plan might say that you have an interest in inventing a, a, a new pendant. And then our job would be to help you figure out how to do that. What do you think?
Yeah.
That's amazing. And in fact, I want you to know, I talked to the team just, um, this, this, this week, I've talked to your team and, and someone brought that up. One of your caregivers knew that, one of the Shabbas. And then we let the administrator know. And we're all very excited to see if we can help your idea grow. Is that okay?
Okay.
Wonderful. And then one more. You know, if, if you can help me figure this out, try, try to answer, what do you think your highest practicable level of psychosocial wellbeing is? And maybe Suzie can, because she's good at stuff like this, too. What do you think, John? How to say?
And do you feel like you have enough people to talk to and interact with that are on the same level with you? So does it start to feel a little lonely?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Is that kind of what you meant, Carmen?
Kind of. Let's keep trying. So if we tried to identify what your highest practicable level of psychosocial wellbeing is, let me take a stab at this. Could it be that you feel you could be socializing more with, with people, particularly those who could have these kinds of conversations with you? Is that a fair stab at it?
Yes.
Okay. And then, again, we would kind of try to get that on your care plan. Maybe it would say, introduce John to other people. You know, maybe they live there, maybe they work there, maybe it's someone in the community that, that we start to feel you might have a connection with. Is that fair to say?
That's true.
Okay. Oh, my gosh. See, this is, this is it, John. That's what I wanted to explore with you. Suzie, do you have any thoughts on any of that? Just curious.
I just am concerned that John doesn't have enough opportunities to, you know, that whole concept of use it or lose it.
Yes.
And I see that he's not using his, his brilliance as much as he could.
Yes.
And so I'm seeing he's tending to isolate a little bit more. And, um, you know, that, that's, the desire's decreasing a little bit. He's, I don't want him to give up on his brilliance because it's there.
Right.
It just needs an outlet. And I'm worried that there isn't one here.
Okay. Now, so we just identified a gap, but now I need your help. How do you feel we could be filling the gap better? You know, what's the, what's the flip side? What are your ideas? What do you yearn for, John?
To what category?
Any or all.
You know, yeah, any of it, but, you know, like, do you have ideas on how to solve the problem? That's kind of the, the flip side question.
Do I have a way to solve the problem?
Yeah. What would your ideas be to solve the problem?
One thought that occurred to me was, uh, put people together by age.
Okay. Sure.
And see if you can make, like, you know, like a connection there.
Uh huh, yes. Good, good idea, John. How about this? Have you met people from the other houses yet?
No.
And, and probably that's because of the, you know, pandemic. But once things open up, that, that too could be a new avenue for you.
Yeah.
And I'll make sure that that gets passed on, okay?
Okay.
Great. Well, this was exactly what I was kind of looking for. And so, John, the beauty is you just helped me show people that it's not that hard to have this discussion with people living in nursing homes. And then because I also consult where you live, I can pass on these ideas to all the right people, okay?
Okay.
Wonderful. And I'll let you go. I know you get tired, okay?
But, yeah, I was gonna say, right now, I'm 20 years younger than most of the people here.
Okay. Wow, okay. You're kind of feeling that, aren't you?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah, thanks. I didn't realize that. Thank you. Well, great. We'll, we'll get to working on it, okay?
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you, Carmen.
Well, let's do it again, maybe sometime.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry you can't see me, but I'm waving too. Bye, John. Thank you.
So everyone, I wish you had more time to talk about that. But anyone who heard it, all of us included, let's just all talk more about highest practicable, physical, mental, and psychosocial. Break it down into all three. And that dear gentleman passed away since I talked to him about a year ago. And I am so grateful for helping him to teach us about this. And then I think I just have one or two more regs to cover. Check this out. At the regulation that requires activity, it also says here, get this, that we are supposed to create opportunities for each resident to have a meaningful life by supporting his or her domains of wellbeing. I'm going to tell you what they are in a minute, but they're in the reg. Can you believe it? And if any of you want resources, this is a free white paper about these seven domains of wellbeing. And the seven are identity, security, autonomy, meaning connectedness, growth, and joy. Like, how many people asked you about your joy level, those of you that live there? And as we get older, not a lot of people talk about growing. We're supposed to be growing and developing at all ages, everyone. What a wonderful thing to start talking about. And last but not least, this is like a care plan in pictures, okay? There's meds and eating and bathing. Okay, fine, good, wonderful care plan. But what's missing, everyone? What's missing is life. And so what if we, we simply gave great care to support the life that you want to live? If someone loves watching the birds, we get them all looking good to go sit and watch the birds or go outside and watch the birds or have a bird feeder, right? So what does anyone want to say about these federal regulations? I'd love to know questions or comments, please. Let's see. I'm going to make sure you guys can talk. Dawn, Brittany, Pam.
Go ahead, Ida.
Oh, well, you can, you know, sleep behind your grandkids all the time. I think I'd have the sense to get to you.
Agreed.
And, uh, uh, I think being around people more your age, you can have a conversation with us.
Yep. Agreed.
As what I think on that, you know?
Well, and you guys have a pretty good group that all get together and go to different activities and like to kind of all hang out at meals and all kinds of different stuff like that.
Hang out in the hallways.
Yep. So I would agree.
Talk about stuff, what we used to do when we were young on the vantage and, and stuff like that, you know?
So that sense of community is helpful.
Thank you, Ida. That's beautiful. Thank you, Brittany. Um, Pam or Dawn, anybody would be or want to add anything?
I, I love the concept of finding out what brings them joy, what makes life worth living for them. It's amazing, though, when I've gone and asked them, how few can actually answer that? And I'm, I'm trying to search out ways to make that conversation happen so that I can actually find out what actually makes them happy, what brings them joy. But I love the concept.
Yeah, me too. Thank you, Pam. Okay, well, I'm going to- Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna round out our hour, everybody. Um, so everyone listening who lives in the nursing home, um, you know, if you heard any idea that's not happening in your place today. Go talk to people, talk to the administrator, tell them you learned the regulations, right? Um, meal times should be when you want them to be, it shouldn't be arbitrary, that means there's no choice. And more choice maybe in what to eat. Uh, when you are woken up, there wasn't choice, your body didn't get to choose when to wake. Uh, you could talk more about language. Um, you could talk about that regulation that, um, we're supposed to act on your complaints and your recommendations about, remember both care and life. Uh, this beautiful concept, highest practicable, bring it up at your care conference. And these seven domains of wellbeing, all of this is found in the CMS regulations. And so last but not least, I just want to teach you all that we have a Wyoming Culture Change Coalition. And we're all about these things, we want to move from focusing on care to focusing on living. And focus from scheduled routines to flexible routines. Uh, from decisions for residents to you make the residents, uh, the decision. From just structured, scheduled activities, programs to more meaningful engagement, real life. From hierarchical departments to more collaborative teams. To, um, from team members rotating versus stay the same, serve the same residents. And, um, not just such a focus on care, but getting to relationships. And you know, don't let the institution let you ever think of each other as us and them, residents and staff, or just all people. And this is your community. And so we have some big goals for our coalition to change the way long-term care is perceived. And to boldly go where no state has gone before, we need your help, everyone. To achieve the best quality of life and care, we put life first for Wyoming residents who need long-term care. And to make long-term care nursing homes to be where people want to both live and work. We also have a website, if you want to check things out, there's lots of resources there. We want to thank the State Survey Agency for approving this grant. And we have, um, five nursing homes that are working more on culture change practices than others, many of you are on the line. Star Valley, South Lincoln, Granite, Life Care of Casper and Wyoming Retirement Basin, thank you so much, you all for being in the project. And just want to remind you, our, this is our March Madness month. Okay, we did it, this is the first special session, tomorrow there's a special session for family members. Um, then next Tuesday is Person-Directed Dining. And all of you residents that have heard this today, you're welcome to come to anything that interests you. Next week, our special sessions are for activities, et cetera, that, that theme on the ninth. And then social services on the tenth and dining services on the eleventh. But there's more in the month, if you want the flyer, let me know. Um, all of you probably have it, and last but not least, and then if anyone else has any more questions. Um, we have two big goals for Wyoming, one is that every person who works in a Wyoming nursing home learns about culture change. So we could use your help, please pass on the link, invite more people to come to all this this month. We have monthly webinars outside of March. By the way, at the end of this month, the twenty-fifth is a very special webinar. Because those homes are going to share what they did during the year, we're going to hear from you all. And then our other big goal, ready, is that people who live in a Wyoming nursing home no longer are woken up. And instead they get to experience the joy. Of, of sleeping until they wake up naturally. So please join us in any way you want to or could. Um, and with that, does anyone have any last question or comment? I'd love to hear from somebody, anything. What do Ombudsmen think of culture change, yeah, go ahead. Anybody?
I think I got the button.
Hi, I can hear you.
Sorry, say it again now.
Um, do you have any questions or what do you think of what you heard today?
I love everything I heard today, I, I think I really, really loved the, um. Idea of doing the more, the meals more restaurant style and how that actually would benefit. Cost and the residents, of course, so I thought that was a really neat idea that maybe we could be latching on to.
Yeah, come on, and this is Max talking, right?
Yeah, and who wouldn't want to have a menu and, and their choice and.
Come on, yeah. Max, make it your legacy for Wyoming as, as the Ombudsman, everybody, Max, are you a new Ombudsman, my friend?
Yes, ma'am, I'm new.
Yeah, so come on, join us, do not get sucked into the institutional ways. Try to always look at everything from the lens of normal. Would that go on in normal community, okay?
Definitely.
Don't get sucked in, Max, okay? Fight it, thank you, beautiful. And everywhere you go, sprinkle open dining, work better, choice, save money, right?
Yes.
Great, great, Patty?
Yes, hi Carmen, hi everyone, um, I think culture change is great, I just joined Carmen a couple of months ago. I worked in, I started working in nursing homes as a licensed vocational nurse or licensed practical nurse back in nineteen eighty-six. Worked in nursing homes for thirty-two years and it's just amazing, the evolution. Of, of the community homes. And it's really exciting to see it being taken even further. And I can't wait to see our, um, communities in thirty years from now, it's, it's going to be awesome.
Yes, it is, with everyone's help. Does anyone have anything else otherwise, thank you so much, Patty and Max for being with us today. Thank you, uh, people who live at Life Care of Casper, Wyoming Retirement Center, Star Valley. And did I forget anyone, I'm so sorry if I did. I think I got y'all, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Bye Carmen.
Bye, thank you, Brittany.
Thanks for having us.
We did it.
Bye, everybody.
Yes, everyone.